I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 15th, 2023. The time is 8:02 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paley.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fabs.
Here. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries by general consent. We will begin with facility development items. Mrs. Kim.
So. Um, Corey.
Okay. All right. So this morning, um, a couple of things we want to talk about. So we're kind of hitting the point where we want to start thinking about and getting a board approval for design stuff for summer of '24. So I'm going to walk through some projects that we're looking to get authorization design from the board, and then we'll get a couple of comments from Nicholas related to summer of '23, if there's been any updates, and then just anything related to the process for 2024. So, um, first thing is, we've, we, with the passage of the strategic plan, we've had kind of a five-year look at what large-scale construction projects we've wanted to accomplish with this summer's work, where we were able to knock out a lot of the projects on that list in one year. The next project on that list is to do a partial roof replacement at the, at the junior high, something that has been on our radar for the last few years, and we've kind of reached the, we've reached the point where now we just need to address that project in the summer of 2024. Then there are a few smaller projects that we would like to include within the base bid. Starting at the junior high, uh, there's a conference room kind of in the middle of the building that, um, it's a good-sized space. One of the things that the building has realized is if we'd like to investigate and then renovate that area to potentially create a meeting space that is flexible, where we could have a flexible wall divider, similar to this larger space where if you just need a couple of people, we could close it, and then there could be separate meetings going on. So, um, that would be included, where we would renovate that space to create a little more flexible situation. Flooring and lighting would, would be included in renovating that space. Then at Mackenzie, there's a couple of items. The last, not this upcoming summer, but the previous two summers, we had taken one-third of the second-floor hallway and classrooms and removed all the old carpet, and then below it was some hard tile surface that had asbestos below it. The reason that we had split it over three summers was just to make the asbestos component a little more manageable. So right now, we just have the northern one-third of the Mackenzie second floor, so it's about like five classrooms, and in the hallway that we're looking to replace the floor. And then also at Mackenzie, the teachers lounge, which is right in the middle of that second floor, um, that floor as well has asbestos, so we'd be removing that. One of the other things we want to do is since we're pulling out, um, the flooring and abating that in the teachers lounge at Mackenzie, is the wall that faces the hallway for the teachers lounge, um, is not flush with the rest of the classrooms along there. It actually sets back, creating a smaller teachers lounge, and the wa, the wall is really just a drywall wall that sits on top of the existing carpet, goes up to the, um, ceiling, ceiling grid. So we'd like to pull that out and then expand the teachers lounge by just moving the drywall wall out a few feet. So that would be included in kind of renovating and making that space bigger, or taking better advantage of the space we have at Mackenzie. Then at Ramona, one smaller item is there's a rooftop unit that services the office area for AC and, um, heat that has kind of reached the end of its life, that we'd want to replace that. And since we're also doing, um, temperature control work in the other parts of the building this, this summer of '23, we'd also like to bring, um, that new, that front office area onto the new control system. So those items would be included in the base bid. Then we have two more additional items that we would like to do that, um, but we're, we're proposing to include them as alternates to the base bid. Alternate more one at the junior high would be to replace the entire first-floor hallways' flooring throughout the first floor, and then plus there would be, I think, three or four classrooms, I think it's four, um, that are due for replacement as well. Um, so that would be, we measured that last week, and we're looking at probably 17,000 to 18,000 square feet. And then the last item on the list for next summer is to do some updates to the junior high auditorium. One of the things that has been challenging is that the, the infrastructure within the auditorium, um, i- is quite old, and it's needed a lot of maintenance to keep it up and running. So what we'd be proposing is to replace the lighting, uh, system and structure, do some electrical work and some control work. So really, the idea is this, we just want to, this is our largest auditorium, one that is, um, used, used the most. We'd like to have reliable, uh, infrastructure in there for, for any kind of event. The goal is not to install the, you know, luxury, high-end stuff, but really just to, um, bring in some new stuff that would be much more reliable. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if Joe has any comments on the process for either. Um, and just one other thing, so the budget for, to cover all of these projects, included all the, some of the smaller ones, is included, included in the, um, budget that I'll be sharing later this morning.
Sure. Thanks, Corey. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, so with regards to 2024, um, much of the same as what we just went through with this year's, uh, work, I think it's going to be very important to work back from a bid opening, um, in the fall of '23 for all the work in summer of '24. Um, there's a tremendous amount of work happening in the workplace right now, um, shooting for that fall bid time. It avoids, uh, bidding in early 2024, because bidding between Thanksgiving, Christmas, that's not the optimal time, uh, to receive bids. So we really want to work back from before Thanksgiving. Um, it was successful last year, um, and we anticipate much of the same. Uh, with regards to the 2023 work, I'll let Mike provide a little update, but all is good. Um, Mike and the team, uh, a lot of planning going on. All the univentilators are, are available. Um, they're sitting in a warehouse, which is great news. Uh, the chiller ship dates are still, uh, end of August, so we're tracking those every couple of weeks. Um, do you have anything else to add, Mike? A little bit?
That's really kind of it. Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, as Joe said, I think getting out to bid early in fall of 2022 for the work this year helped tremendously in the, you know, the procurement effort, and we're seeing that now, uh, there really have been no major surprises, and things are proceeding as we expected. So we're anxious to get started here and get the ball rolling.
Any questions with regards to bidding 2024 work or summer '23 update?
I just, can somebody remind me what we were thinking about? I know there's a few remaining junior high classrooms for air conditioning, and I just don't remember what our plan was for when we wanted to do that, since we'll be in the school.
Yep. So the, the next, uh, so after like this summer's projects, the, the plan had been to, in the summer of '24, the primary project would be partial roof replacement at the junior high, then come back in summer of '25 and do the remaining dozen classrooms on the first floor at the junior high. And then in '26, we would, uh, try and tackle replacing all the windows at the junior high.
Thank you for that.
Can I ask a question? And I apologize, Corey, that I hadn't thought of this sooner. Um, the WGHS, um, conference room renovation, are, is that a pretty known-sized project? I know that there's, um, there's a lot of unique walls surrounding that conference space, and the reason I'm asking is just, I'm wondering if that should be an alternate bid instead of a small project within the base bid. But I, I haven't admittedly done the research that you all have on the actual space, so, um...
Well, we're, kind of the initial thought, and this is where, like, having the architects and engineers meet with us to see what we can do, but there are already two, two doors to that conference room. And so we would be looking at essentially trying to take advantage of, um, using those doors that are already in place, because if you, the wall that shared with the main hallway, um, there's lockers there. I don't think we would want to try and create any, anything there. And then on the other side, where there is one door, there's also, uh, small offices in there, so I don't think we would want to try and... And then to go the other way, I think you would actually bump into a courtyard.
Yes, yes. Yeah. There, there's some complications there. Okay. Just put it on, just to put it on the radar, it doesn't sound like it makes sense, but I'm channeling my inner Frank today, and so I wanted to just throw that out as an option to think about as you go forward.
And as the design, and as the design's progressing, we're doing our budget assessments, um, and as that process is taking place, if there's something that, um, becomes a large, a large cost, um, discussions certainly are had to carving that out of the base bid and creating an alternate. Um, so that's just ongoing conversation that'll take place.
Yes. So that was my question, um, and maybe you just answered it. But, um, so the difference between adding a smaller project to the base bid or an alternate is that the, these are like smaller projects that just get absorbed into the big one, uh, or to the main one, the primary, and then the alternate are somewhat larger and would need to be approved separately? Is that one?
Potentially, um, separate, so they'll all be within the same bid form. They'll all come to the board for, for, uh, approval. An alternate could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a large value. It could be an enhancement that maybe we're unsure if that's something we want to do within the project, so it's always good to generate as much bid day flexibility and not just dump everything into the base bid. There's nothing worse than just not having the ability to discuss and make decisions. So anything that does make sense to pull out of the base, it's easily, easily done, and, um, we create that as a standalone identifiable number on the bid form, so.
Okay. So really, the question I have then is, if there's no more questions, is, historically, before we, the district starts incurring design costs with architects and engineers, we at least get the boards okay before we do that. Um, so that's really, the question is, is the board okay with giving that okay today? Or at, given what Joe said about the bidding timeline, at the latest, we would want that, um, approval at the, at the June, at the June meeting?
Yeah, it looks like, um, I think we're good to go for now. Is that right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
So you have what you need from us?
Yep. Absolutely.
Mrs. Kim, anything else with facilities?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And thank you. Um, we will move on to school finance. Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. I'm going to, we'll go over to Corey.
Thank you.
For these points on audit services and the budget.
Okay. All right. So the first item up is our audit services contract renewal. So we'll just kind of like step back a, a little bit. So back in January of '20, the district switched audit firms, and at that time, the board approved Baker Tilly for a three-year award. As we wound down the winter, I reached out to our partner at Baker Tilly, uh, just finding out when we might get the renewal. That's when he shared with me that we'd be looking at probably at a minimum of 56, 50 to 60% increase. We had the conversation in March, like, okay, we've seen some large increases in different areas, do we go out for an RFP? Do we just try and, you know, uh, do the renewal? Decision was made to do the RFP, see what was out there. So we went through that process, and in between the end of our, uh, after our April meetings, but before today, we, uh, finished our RFP window, um, we found out that the market is, is challenging right now, and that no firm had responded, which then left us with, we still need to, uh, have an audit done, it's required by school code. And so at that point, since we had no respondents, including Baker Tilly to the RFP period, I reached out to Baker Tilly, um, to see if there was an option where they would be able to, um, you know, do our audit for this year. And in talking with the partner, he provided, uh, informa, or renewal amounts for, in two forms, one for fiscal year '23 only, which is notated at the bottom of the handout, or we could do, uh, three-year renewal. And then, in either case, the first year would be about 57% higher, so it is in line with what Nick had shared with me a few months ago. Um, and then the year 20, the fiscal year '24 and '25, um, audit renewal would be an additional 5% each year. The one kind of caveat to that is because, um, you know, their schedule was full, to accomplish this, we would essentially fall to the end of their schedule, which means instead of, um, uh, Nick and, and myself presenting our, our audit reports, which is typically done in November, that's probably when they anticipate starting fieldwork, like the majority of their, their audit work, um, could possibly slide to December. So realistically, then we'd be looking into the new year in 2024, the January, February meetings, um, when we would have, have Baker Tilly out to present the final reports. So that's really the one, like, downside of it all, but, um, so that was kind of the process. Yeah, go ahead.
Corey, I'm sorry. Let me, so the timing, if, even if we went with Baker Tilly, it was going to be later? If that's where you're going with this?
Yeah. That was like, so, yeah. So like, that was the, um, that was like them being willing, only way they'd be willing to do it this year. I mean, the, the feedback I had received from all the, like, the firms that, um, had, had provided feedback on why they were going to submit a response was, they don't have staff, their schedule was already full, um, you know, people are, staff are constantly leaving. If they took us on, they would only be hurting another existing client, because, you know, to try and get us done on our typical timeline, um, so everybody seemed to be in the same. And then there was even cases where, when I talked to partners at firms, that they had actually trimmed some of their existing clients, probably their least profitable, but still something that, at least when I was in public accounting, that didn't really happen. So, um, so that left us with, we still needed somebody. This is kind of a, the way to compromise and, and have, um, have, have a firm do our audit for, for fiscal year '23, so.
Some questions? Any questions? Uh, can you remind me the scope of our audits? And can that be negotiated?
The scope?
Yeah.
Not really. Um, so like, the things that they're all doing for us are all required, um, like, they're auditing each of the funds, like, they're auditing, auditing the District 39 funds, they're providing all the necessary reports that we have, um, which includes, you know, providing us fi, you know, financial statements, providing this huge Excel document that's in ISB's own form, um, they're providing that to them, they're, they're auditing any of our federal expenditures and submitting a separate document to the federal government. Um, we have, as noted at the bottom here, SELF is our, um, workers' comp pool that we're a part of. There's a small audit they do there that SELF, as a pool, wants to have an independent look at what are the salaries by type of employee, um, and then we also have the, the LIXI audit, so.
Oh, Amy, did you have a question?
Well, not a question, but it just, it seems to me that we're not going to be in a different position in a year from now, so renewing for the longer term, unless I'm missing something, seems to make the most sense, so we don't... Like, if we had renewed earlier, we would have been on an earlier timeframe for...
Yeah. The only thing different, it, it just in talking with Nick of what he was sharing that we would have faced in a renewal, if we had a, back in March, if we had said, okay, we don't like the renewal, but go ahead, we, I mean, 57% is within the range that he mentioned, we would have been in a similar, the only thing that would have been different is we could have gotten on their schedule. One of the reasons that he had shared with me initially of why they didn't, um, respond to our RFP is, they had every intention to, they had some unexpected proposal wins, and, and if you think about like a firm like Baker Tilly, they have two offices in the Chicago area, and while Nick is the one that services us, they have only so many staff, and they, other partners could be winning in different industries or different areas, and the work could overlap, and, and so their schedule filled up, and hence the reason we're at the end of the line for fiscal year '23. So, but to your point, like, if I were to give a recommendation, given that the, the second and third year are 5% renewals and what we're seeing in the market, I think that's fair. I would prefer to see, see a three-year contract renewal.
That's helpful. Okay. I had one more question then.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have a rate per hour for these guys, and do you have a sense of what they charge and how many hours it takes?
I don't have a rate per hour, um, a current one anyways. You know, like, it's not something that is, I guess, commonly discussed in that we're providing a total contract, and so if, whatever, say, I don't know, say it's 400 or 500, 600 hours it takes them to do this, um, you know, if they assign staff and those staff take 700 hours, well, that's on them. Or if they assign staff that are really gifted and they can complete it in 500 hours, um, the only time it would, like, hourly, would even, like, even if something, even something outside of this scope that we needed assistance with, um, we wouldn't have any, like, change order that was, like, time and materials. And hourly, it would be like, okay, you're going to do something extra? Okay, here's $1,500, or it would be a fixed amount. We don't really get into that, um, just because it doesn't protect the district in any way. Yeah.
Yeah, Anne?
Um, thank you. I would just agree with what has been said, um, considering the RFP did not produce any other submissions, I think that that gives us a, a better understanding of the industry, and that that's probably not going to change, um, in the real short term. So at, at this point, we're going to need to look at an increase between 50 and 60%, and maybe we just go for the three-year renewal and get back on track with them.
Appreciate that. Okay. So Corey, you're looking for some input from us on...
Yeah.
How to approach it?
Yeah. Because what the next step would be, depending upon what the board wants to support, either a one or a three, then we would, next Monday night, have the, have the, with the appropriate engagement letter included in the board packet for approval.
Right. And I think I'm seeing consensus that we will go with your recommendation.
Okay.
Three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is just a draft presentation of our fiscal year 2024 budget. All right. So let's start with the timeline. So today, we're, we're taking a first look at the draft budget, uh, we'll take a look next Monday evening as well, the board meeting. And then in, um, at the June 5th meeting, we will review the tentative budget. To be honest, at this point, um, there probably won't be any changes, if there are, they would be very small. Then at the June 12th meeting, uh, one of the requirements is that the board would approve a tentative budget for fiscal year '24, and then we can have that budget on display for the more, the, the greater than 30-day period that's required, leading into our, uh, August 28th board meeting, where we would hold a public hearing. At that meeting, and then we would, at the August 28th, following, uh, similar practice from the past, we would have the board approve that fiscal year '24 budget, and then by the end of September, the administration would file the budget with ISB and other agencies as, as required. All right. So operating revenues by source, a nice pie graph that shows 82% of the revenue comes from property taxes, uh, looking at 93% being locally supported, um, just reiterates that, you know, while the stuff that happens in Springfield and, and DC can have an impact, relatively speaking, compared to other districts, their impact is much smaller for D39. All right. Local revenue, property tax revenue, uh, the levy that's applicable to this budget is the 22 levy, which has a 5% CPI increase. Embedded in there is the 10-year average of 14.2 million of new growth. Also, we're looking at Senate Bill 508, we know the amount of, of that added to the extension is 435,000. And we've set the net collection rate in the budget at 98%, which is a little bit on the lower end of our, of our 10-to-12-year average. And just for a reference, um, for every 0.25% collected, it's about $154,000 additional or less in revenue. Now for interest revenue, so, you know, after a decade or more of, of extremely low interest revenue for districts like 30, 39 that have, you know, made that smart decision to, to have a, have an appropriate fund balance, just not have, have not been rewarded for it, well, finally, in fiscal year '23, we're starting to feel that benefit. The, the interest revenue will be up at a million dollars or slightly over for fiscal year '23. Recently, we've had ra, rates where even in our liquid accounts that we can withdraw money tomorrow, um, we're getting 4.9% on there, so that's, that's great. I mean, for, like I said, for the better part of a decade, it was always well below a 1%. Sometimes it was well below a quarter percent. So, as it relates to this line item, we will, uh, as we always do, we'll kind of reassess this in late July, just to kind of see where the market's heading and, and what our cash flow is looking like. Um, you know, a couple of things on my mind are, we've had, the last year, just rates rising, rising, um, you know, by the time I make the, the budget, final budget decisions in late July or very early August, have the rates leveled off, or will they continue to rise at a quarter percent? It seems like we're hitting a point where they start to level off and they just hold steady for a while. Then the other big component is, um, I'm really hopeful that our second installment taxes will go out on time, because now that we have like a really, um, nice rate that we can earn on, um, you know, we would be missing out on some, some really good interest revenue if we found ourselves in a position where that second installment, instead of being built out in July, doesn't go until November or December like it did last, last fall. Um, so we'll be keeping an eye on that, where that's headed. Um, I'm hopeful that there will be some significant improvement on those buildings. Corporate personal property replacement taxes, um, the summer is usually when IDOR releases their estimate for the upcoming fiscal year. The current year, we're tracking to be similar to fiscal year 2022, actual of 1.5 million. And what's significant about that is fiscal year '22 amount was the highest amount that we've, we've ever had, and that more than doubled the pre, prior high that we ever had, which was 700,000 in fiscal year '21. Um, you know, so we're, we're, we have one payment left to be collected. I suspect that we'll approach the 1.5 million mark again, maybe be just slightly under for fiscal year '23. I'll be curious to see what, what they have in store for fiscal year '24. But so far, we're, we're kind of holding steady in that area. We'll, we'll see if that starts to pull back or not. It is, it is a line item that is driven by income taxes, so it could be susceptible, it would be susceptible to fluctuations in the economy or employment. So they're, they're something we keep an eye on, and we're, we're trying to be a little conservative with, just knowing that not everyone can forecast the next time you might see a downturn or employment or recession, so to speak. Uh, the next line item is...
Craig, I slowed you down. So did you get an idea from the department why it doubled? There, there's a complicated formula for how this...
Yeah.
...amount gets allocated, and it's based on, you know, brain assault, what I'm about to say, based on what personal property taxes were in the late 70s. Yes. Very interesting.
Yeah.
So, and then it doubles.
Yeah. They have not, um, provided, at least to my, to my viewpoint, a great explanation... Yeah, they have not provided, at least to my, to my viewpoint, a great explanation. The best I can come up with is like, if you look at the period for 21, 22, it's like we were kind of coming, like everything kind of shut down to begin COVID, then everything opened back up. You know, some people were able to save money during that period. You weren't, people weren't doing a lot. And then you had all the different rounds of federal government money. Other than that, like I don't, you know, yeah, we've had some wage inflation, but like not, not double. I, I, that's one of the reasons I've been hesitant, like, okay, was this like a one-time thing or two-year thing where now we're going to pull back in a major way? I'm curious to see. And I even got a letter last week from Illinois Department Revenue. One of the things that they do, it's always multiple years in, in arrears, is they go back and look after everyone's completed their tax returns. Because so many, there's different tax year ends for different types of businesses. And then people file extensions. Will they go back and see if there's any reallocations? And they, the letter I got said that they, between a couple of the funds, one of them, which is replacement taxes, the reallocation, once they do the final calculation is like half percent to 1%. Well, for next year, for fiscal year 24, it's a five, they're saying it's a 5% reallocation. So like whatever they were going to give us for replacement taxes in fiscal year 24, they'll have to make 5% less because they had essentially given us 5% too much. Which if you look at the numbers, that's about 75,000.
Yeah.
So it's not nothing, but it's not going to drop us down 500 or 600,000. So, I don't know. Keep tuition, another item that we keep our eye on very closely throughout the spring and summer. These enrollments are as of May 8th. Some strong keep enrollment numbers once again. And as we work our way through the summer, we will adjust this line item and review it. Typically, what we've seen is from the spring and heading into August is each of these numbers to creep up just, just a small amount as families move in. Other local revenue line items of note, within this draft budget, the various student fee increases that were board approved, we've included those. That now brings our lunch fees to 1.3 million for fiscal year 24. The, the current year budget, which should get really close, is about 1.2 million. Then on transportation fees, you see bump up to 718,000. The current year actual is tracking right, right at that 630,000 dollar mark. State and federal aid, the vast majority of items within this area, we're holding flat. Till we get into the summer and we can see final allocations and see what kind of rollovers that we have. Then for SRR3, probably the last component of all the rounds of, of money related to COVID. For right now, we don't have anything in the budget for that on either the revenue or expenditure side. But once we have a better idea of how much money might be left, we'll incorporate that into the budget. It has a net zero impact on the, on the bottom line. Revenue and expenditures are set to match each other. And it just, one last note, since SRR3 was the largest amount that we received, all that money does need to be spent by September 30th, 24. Operating expenditures by object, no surprise that salary and benefits are just under 70, just under 80% of our total cost. All right. So salaries and staffing, so how do we budget for it? As we're going through there, we, we work with Human Resources on staffing and get some estimates of FTEs to be included in the various areas for the upcoming school year. Something that, similar to the enrollment with, with KEEP, we're constantly monitoring throughout the spring and summer. So for SSU staff or support staff, since we have a multi-year agreement with them, we, we know what those increases are for the upcoming year. WA's agreement expires this summer, so we have some estimates in place until the new contract is settled. And then for the admin and exempt group, those include some estimated increases within the budget as well. And then as far as like the FTEs that are included from year to year, those are driven by like the class sizes, which fall within our board targets. Medical and dental insurance, always a key point of the budget. You know, it was a tough renewal for, for the upcoming school year with, you know, HMO coming in at nine and a half percent and PPO, the high deductible, at 15%. And just to provide a perspective, in the five-year projections that we do every December, we have assumed a 5% annual increase in this line item. And so when we look at the renewal, renewal and how high it is this year, it's going to cost an extra 375 to 435,000 above the 5% that we had included in the five-year projections. So this is the additional amount. And the reason I have a range is that last year, when we had a renewal that was in the high single digits, we saw some migration from PPO to HMO plan. As we have open enrollment this month, I would suspect that we'll see some more of that. And so depending upon how that shakes out, we'll determine the overall cost to the board. PP, our dental PPO, 3.2% renewal increase, HMO, nothing. Same thing for vision, no increase. IMRF rate, this is an area that for the last two to three years has been a real positive for, for D39. We recently received the preliminary rate for calendar year 24, just at 5.37%. So when you blend that together with the current year rate of 519, you're looking at 5.28 as our IMRF rate for fiscal year 24. I can't say for certainty that that's the lowest it's ever been, but I suspect that it, if it's not, it probably is about as low as it's ever been. Those are phenomenal rates for, for the IMRF employer rate to be down in the 5% range. And just as a point of perspective, a few years ago, we were up over 8%. So as we've been dropping, you know, we're, we're saving money per, for 1% change. 1% equals roughly 79, $79,000 a year. Similarly, if we were to start ticking up, it would be, it would be the, the reverse.
Wait, can you remind me what IMRF is?
Yeah. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
Oh, yeah.
So everybody in the district, because we're an IMRF employer or considered IMRF employer, teachers and administrators are part of the TRS, Teachers Retirement System. And then everybody else who's not certified falls under IMRF. So I, and just for reference, IMRF has school districts, municipalities, park districts, counties, all within there. And so every employer has its own rate actuarially calculated every single year. So even though we're at 5%, there could be employers in the state that are paying double us. Because I know when I had, when I was in public accounting, I, some clients would be at like 10, 11%, and there were clients that were up near 20. It's all based upon your own experience and, you know, so.
This is our, I think we went deep into this at some point. But this is our sort of share of the big number.
So the employee.
The state.
Right. So the employees that are in IMRF, they each pay four and a half percent of, out of their paycheck. This is our employer cost, which is different than TRS, where TRS, we pay less than 1% employer cost. And then in theory, the state's picking up, right? So like here, this IMRF, the state doesn't pick up anything. All right. So purchase services and supplies, another sizable area of our budget. So our general approach is that budget allocations would get increased by CPI. Although I would know like some, some areas do increase more, but there's also many that increase less than CPI annually. And what I mean by this is there's some specific areas where services or contracts are adjusted to like note what we know the cost to be or what they're likely to be. Just a few examples, the area of liability and workers' comp insurance. In both cases, we're a part of pools to help reduce the risk to D39. Our liability policy runs on a calendar year. So we find that out usually like the first week of December, what our renewal percentage is going to be. Then workers' comp, we usually find out like in May, usually in late, somewhere in mid to late May, we'll find out like what our renewal is for the upcoming fiscal year. You also have replacement cycles that are, that at times can be uneven in curriculum and technology. One of the nice things that Tony's worked on it for technology, at least that helps me out, is we've started to hit a point where we're pretty level for technology replacement, where we're placing a very similar amount every single year, which is nice because when you're budgeting, you don't have these big peaks where all of a sudden you get hit with a million or a million and a half or $2 million swings and then you, and it goes away the following year. And then another, then the last area that doesn't necessarily trend with CPI is our, our various utilities, electric, natural gas and water. I will say, just as a, maybe next month or in a future month, maybe in the August or September, I'll have the actual amount. But if we all remember the, we did four bathroom renovations at Harper last summer. And one of, beyond needing to be replaced, one of the things was that the water and the urinals just flushed like every one to two or three minutes. So when I look so far this year, Harper had been by far like our highest water usage. Now they're on track to be our lowest. So like just, you know, that wasn't the sole reason we did the project, but it was certainly a contributing factor and it's already, it's already providing value. Our special education budget, I just want to point out, one of the largest line items that we, you know, we're, we're, we're subject in this area to, you know, the students that we receive. We, we have to educate them and if we have to outplace them, then they're outplaced. And, you know, there are costs with that. So for last year's budget, we in particular had some students that were very, on the very high cost end of the spectrum. And we had to increase that budget line item by approximately a million dollars. As we look ahead to fiscal year 24, we're able to now decrease that budget line item by roughly 700,000. So that line item is now 1.6 million. You know, the one caveat is, you know, we might have a good budget plan. Kids move in, depending upon what they cost, that could either be a benefit to us or it could be, it could hurt us financially. So we have a budget in place, but we also have that obligation to educate the students that are within our boundaries. All right. So then capital projects, the capital projects fund. So they see the total budget for this fund for fiscal 24 is 13.1 million. The vast majority of that amount relates to the projects we're doing this summer. It's the four air conditioning projects and then the renovation work here at the MEC. And then it also includes a small part of the hard costs for projects in the summer of 24, which we previously talked about. But it would include the vast majority of the design costs, which are almost probably about 80 to 85% spent before the project starts. Debt service and transfers, debt service fund, where we've got at a 4.2 million, that's to make principal and interest payments on our Series 20, 20 and 23 Series Bonds. And then also to pay off the debt certificates, which receive a transfer from the O and M fund. Three transfers planned for, for next year. The 1,063,000 is our operating funds, operating money that we're transferring from operations and maintenance to debt service to cover those debt certificates. Then the 2.8 million from O and M to capital projects is to cover, cover the remaining summer projects that aren't covered by the bond issuance after that money runs out. And then the 138,000 from the add to the debt service is a transfer required for accounting purposes for leases. And so the, the funds originally, when we write the checks, they come from the Ed Fund. But for accounting purposes, ISB wants us to show those payments from debt service. So we do a transfer at the end of the year for the exact amount of the, of the lease payments, which we estimate at 138. So that brings us to the operating fund summary. So we're looking at 75.4 million in total revenue, 71 in expenditures. So that starts with a projected surplus of 4.3 million. However, after we look at our other uses, which are 4.1, we've got the 2.9 going for construction projects. We have 2, 1.2 for the debt certificates and leases. That just brings us down to a net projected surplus of 279,000, which would then create a fund balance that gives us a 41.9% or roughly 42%. So above our fund balance minimum set by the board and also being right at 42% if we go back to our, I think that's the next slide. Operating revenues and expenditures, I like this graph in that it kind of shows over a little bit of a period of five years that we have revenues exceeding expenditures by a little bit each year. You like to see that trend. If you start to see the trend going the other way, then you know you have something structural going on. And then this slide is our fun, operating fund balance slide. You see our upper and lower limits with the red lines. You see the kind of the trend downwards towards fiscal year 23, where we're starting to hit that 42%. And that's just our planned spend down of fund balance to accomplish some of our larger construction needs over the last few years. And then what you see going out is, is a, is a plan that allows us to complete some construction projects and, and other goals and stay, you know, 2% to 3% above the, the minimum. With that said, I will answer any questions. Thank you, Corey.
I have a quick one.
Oh, yeah.
So everything's a highly high insurance increase. Do you know what, is that just across them?
Yeah. Yeah. When you sit.
It's the biggest I can remember seeing.
Yeah. When you sit in the, as Heather and I said, listen to our cooperative talk and the people that help run the cooperative that work with many pools or, I mean, that's their job. They're in the, in the, in the medical insurance industry. Like a couple of things, we had made some changes last renewal and they felt like those, those changes started January 1st. And the time you start getting data from Blue Cross was like end of February, like beginning of March. We only have a couple of months of having made these planned changes to reduce your renewal. So they thought that was one, but two, the overall marketplace was quite high. Everybody was seeing much larger renewals than they would want to see over the long term. Some were higher than us, some were slightly better, but we were, I wouldn't say we were outliers. It was just, I think one of the things that's challenging as they look even past this renewal is as we start to move away from lots of like federally covered things related to COVID, is what, what happens? Like, does the cost get shoved into the insurance plan? Does it get pushed directly onto the consumer on their own outside of an insurance plan? It's just a lot of unknowns. No one really had those answers.
The only thing I would add to that is that since getting the renewal rate, our claims experience continues to trend as it did in January and February. So the more months we're adding to this plan year, we're still looking not great.
And that was why, like on that slide, I wanted to quantify like, how much is that, right? Like, you know, it's, I didn't want anybody to see like, oh, it's nine and a half and 15% and think, oh, well, that's probably only like 50,000. No, it's, it's a sizable amount, right? And that's why the plan, as we're sitting there listening to the renewal, we're like, okay, these planned changes need to work. And I think as we gather a whole nother year of data, work our way into that next renewal, there will hopefully be some improvement. Or if not, there'll be a lot of things up for discussion. So.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Corey, that was really helpful. Back over to Chief President.
Thank you, Mr. Caesaretti. Next is our strategy committee, Mrs. Schneider-Fabebs.
Hi. I'm going to turn it over.
Well, thank you. We actually have a couple of things up for update to the board regarding our strategies and our action plan for this year. As has become the board's tradition, committee, the whole gives us a chance to talk about some of the progress we've made on our action steps. And so today I'm pleased to welcome Principal Kate Dominique and GLAD Jeff Dees to the podium. They have been working to look at our sixth to seventh grade transition in the same way that we have made some improvements to our fifth, fourth to fifth grade transition with our students and families moving into High Crest. We had an action step this year to do some similar work in supporting our students as they transitioned to seventh grade from sixth grade. And so Ms. Dominique. And so Ms. Dominique and Mr. Dees have taken a look at this and have some plans in action, as well as some next steps that they'd like to update the board on.
Good morning, thanks for having us. Happy Monday. So I'm Kate Dominique, as you know, and I have Jeff Dees here on my left, seventh grade level administrator. And part of strategic plan goal for within family partnerships has been to really look at better support strategies for transitions from fourth to fifth grade, which High Crest has been very focused on, and sixth to seventh grade. And so in the fall, we gave a feedback survey to our students and families. And about the three main things we heard from students and families were, they really want orientation after their child sees and gets their schedule, so that they can meet their child's teacher. And so I think in the past, there have been weeks where orientation falls before they know who their homeroom teacher is, or who their, what team they're on, and so we really wanted to try and provide orientation after students could get their schedules. We also heard, kind of surprisingly to us, but it was great feedback, that families really want more information about extracurriculars. How can my child be involved at school? What do athletics look like? What clubs have you offered? And then lastly, they wanted to at least see where their child's homeroom is. So they wanted their child to be able to come in and say, okay, this is exactly where I'm going, first day of school, to find my homeroom teacher. And so didn't really get a ton of feedback that they needed a full school tour, but that they just wanted their child to be able to come in the front door and know where they were going to go on that first day. And so with these goals in mind, we have set up a timeline of some transition events for this coming school year. Some are already in the works, and I will pass this off to Jeff to kind of walk through what that looks like.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So we are already in May, crazy to say. Right now, this timeline goes April to September. So in April, our big focus is parent feedback. So we provide the feedback forms for all families to provide feedback for us. We gave out forms to the 380 HMS families coming up to seventh grade. We have right now 212 receipts, information from them. It's about 55% receipt rate of feedback from them on things like peer placement, teacher requests, team requests, style of learning for their child. So then we use that process and placement in the coming months to guide things to better suit their child's needs with a classroom for seventh grade. May is more about kind of parent events, so we have the parent webinar last Thursday. We did not know it would be an 80-degree night on a Thursday evening, so attendance was not as high as usual, but we are posting online today. So it'll be online on the district webpage today, as well as some smaller need to know videos. HMS did well creating these like five-minute blurb videos about like key FAQs they have. We've done the same. So we'll be posting videos about things like math placements, special education, understanding the schedule, power school, schoology, so parents can more easily find quick things about their child's needs for WJHS. We also are doing right now, special education tours with HMS staff coming over to our buildings, so kind of our higher need students getting a lay of the land with teachers, meeting their, their teachers in advance of the year in a smaller setting, so they kind of know already, okay, I'm going to see this face next year, here is my room, here's my area. So that's happening right now as well. As we look towards June, June is kind of obviously end of the school year. We have some things being made by our current students to kind of give them a life of a student at our school that will show to higher students at seventh grade. Homeroom times in June, so they get kind of a lay of the land from the student point of view, like here's kind of some hotspots, some things to look for, some cool stuff in our building, so they can see that. We did hear last year that people also enjoyed seeing the building and walking around, so we wanted to honor that, so we're having, we're having welcome walks in June. We'll open the building up for families and students, they want to come to the building in June, just walk the ground, see the space, get comfortable with it. That will happen in June as well. Also in June, placement is occurring this whole time, obviously on our end of things, this is more student events, but we are doing placement in this entire process. As we look towards August, it's that welcome time, welcome new families, welcome to students' orientation, more than that to come. First week of school, redesigning to be more of like community events and homerooms for S E L building, community events, team building, really focusing on those relationships in that core 25 kids per group, to help them feel welcomed in our community. Then September is curriculum night as usual for families, and doing a survey for families also and staff and students to see, did these modifications meet their needs for orientation going forward? So more details come on these a little bit right now, but I want to give you a snapshot of what the timeline is overall. So again, just some more details here on the webpage, we'll go through everything, kind of get some details already, but input forms going out, we've had high interest on there, rated the webpage for transitions, updating with, with videos weekly, a calendar, differing things to kind of show families, like here's your spot for information, and it's going to be a source, we constantly update with more and more things to kind of guide you in the process of like transitioning from HMS to our school. Again, the webinar and tours going on in May as well, and those needs to know videos also, more details there on those clubs as well, and those videos that we think will be a good resource to point families to, especially, you know, in the transition from, from my role to a successor, that they can easily find this information and they can, it's already done, and the new person won't be confused of how to find stuff, it's already there and done for them. Again, same things with, with June, the welcome videos and welcome walk for, for students. The key thing for us is changing orientation, and we'll go through it in one second. Orientation in the past in August has been an event that students did not meet teachers at. It was an event where they came to building, they were student-led, or it was like volunteer teachers, but not the teacher they had on their record in their schedule. So that for us, as Kate said, was a key piece of feedback, so we did a lot of work to, with our staff to reorganize things, so staff can be present at orientation. So really the key for that date will be orientation is present with students and staff all being there to help make it a welcoming space for kids. So I will let Kate go through orientation in more detail, because she's been leading that process more than I will, and here we go.
All right, thanks, Mr. Dees. So we want to provide that opportunity for students to meet their teachers face to face and see where that homeroom location is going to be. And we also want to provide some of the feedback we received, which we thought was really valuable about extracurriculars and athletics, and have Mr. Harper, who is one of our athletic directors, come down and have an opportunity to talk a little bit about that. So the students will, will be welcome to Willmet Junior High by teams for about a 30-minute orientation, and they will start with an introduction from myself and the seventh grade level administrator, and how to get involved at WJHS. So we'll have Mr. Harper, Mr. Toy come down, possibly a club advisor, and have them talk to families, or actually students, a little bit about what they, what there is to get involved in. At this point, we're planning that it'll be students only, working with the PTO on, on a place where families could go and connect with other families, or parents could go connect with their parents, but we think it'll just be students at this time. Students will then be guided to their homeroom classroom with their teacher, where they will obviously meet their teacher before the first day of school, and then have an opportunity to see the other classrooms within their team. For the most part, our teams are, are pretty close to one another before they walk out through the science wing, where there, they will then be able to see their science teacher. So this is our plan for now. We're working with PTO to host a parent social time in the cafeteria while this is happening, so they can talk about their nerves. Usually, parents are a little more nervous than even the students are, and, and just talk with some parents who maybe there is, this isn't their first child coming to Willmet Junior High, so they can share a little bit of their, their background. We will also be hosting the usual September events, so we will have our seventh grade curriculum night, and during curriculum night, parents will be invited to meet their child's teachers. It's something that we do every year, it'll happen in September. And then we'll do, we have a new student welcome for families, which we always love. It keeps the groups a little bit smaller. Last year was the first year we were able to really get into the building, just because of with COVID, we were very conscientious about who was coming in, and it's, it really provides students some useful feedback on where they're going and what the, just the general outline of, of the building. And then we will be giving the student and family survey earlier this year. As most of you know, adolescents have a short memory span, and so we gave the survey this year in October, and I think it was just a little too far removed for them. By this point, they've learned how to use their lock for the most part, they know where the locker rooms are, they know where their classes are, and so we want to make sure that this year, we really give families and students the survey right away in late August, so that we can get some great feedback for what they could have known before they came in the front door, that would have helped, and add that to our orientation plans for the following year. So this is our plan for this year. What kind of questions do people have that we could answer?
Thank you so much. I think these changes are really exciting, and I really appreciate you responding to student and parents requests. I just had a quick question, and I'm sure this is probably already the case, but I saw that you have these videos on different subjects. Is that information available in like document form for parents who just want to skim that information rather than watch videos?
Most of those things are on different webpages. So like math placement's on a CNI page, athletics is on their page, the schedule, we have a power school like tech page for parents. So it's, it's all out there, it's just not housed. So we're trying to more easily house it, so parents can look at one spot and find it.
Thank you. Thank you. I just had a quick question out of curiosity, the 55% response rate on the parent input forms, is that pretty standard?
Yes, it is. A lot of families too have IEP needs, go with their LBS already, so they're kind of being met in that way already. So I think in terms of feedback, it's probably higher than that. A lot of this is general education families go to this form, and a lot of IEP families go to their LBS, and then they do things that way. This is a standard rate, for sure.
A lot of requests to consider and-
Oh, yes.
And navigate, so it's, thank you for asking that question. It's, it's, it is a pretty high rate, actually, because it's-
I'm, I'm really surprised, too. I thought it was sort of like-
Only if necessary.
Yeah.
Yes.
But 55% is-
It's a pretty high rate. It's something, it is definitely something we've thought a little bit about, are we asking the right questions and prompting people in the right way, because it does then create a lot of need for adjusting the schedule by hand, if I'm not speaking out of turn.
We've worked as, as a 5-18, Kelly Jackson, Kate, all of our GLADs, about the form to make it more targeted. I think when I started here five years ago, it was very broad, and so it was hard to narrow the focus of what was being asked for and then schedule it accordingly. The families would be frustrated that we said these five things, you didn't meet them, therefore you didn't hear us. So we tried to make it more priority focused, so we could say the fact of like, what's priority one, what's your priority two, and therefore, we can really try to honor the first priority, and then say the rest, kind of, we do what we can, to eliminate those kind of miscommunications families have, while also meeting the needs that families say about their child's needs for, for the various grade they're rolling in next year.
I would just like to say thank you to you guys for this, and also especially to the teachers and staff who are willing to be there on that day. I know that the end of summer is a very happy, valuable time, so it means a lot, I think, to the kids and to the families.
I'll just add, thank you so much, and I love that you incorporated feedback. You know, when I look at this robust plan, it really, I think, addresses the nerves that children and families have in making that transition, and you're, you're wrapping around them with lots of different ways to, you know, assuage those nerves. And I just want to say, I love the idea of the student videos from the current junior high kids being watched by this year's sixth graders. I thought that was brilliant, so thank you.
I think it's been one of the benefits of that student council, you know, that we've talked about throughout the year, is that we can kind of pull some students, and it makes a little bit easier for us to use students to guide those conversations, too. But really a kudos to the teachers, because when we went to them and said, hey, this is the feedback we have, what are your ideas? You know, they jumped in and started brainstorming with how we could make this happen, so absolutely. All right, thank you for having us. If we don't have any other questions, we'll head back across the street.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dees.
Yes, every year, at this time of year, the board receives an enrollment update, and that enrollment update is typically provided to the Board of Education at the May board meeting, and so we are preparing for that. But in conjunction with that, as part of the strategic plan, we've been taking a close look also at our non-homeroom classes. So we wanted to give a preview of the enrollment report for the board at today's meeting, and also just some highlights from that strategic plan goal, where we're looking at use of our resources, and quite frankly, also meeting the needs of our students with the resources that are available in, in a flexible way. So I will let Dr. Glawacki take this presentation. Thank you.
Morning. This is an overview of where we're at, at the moment. As you know, if you've listened to board meetings or are seeing any of our spring updates, it will change likely by August, because it's something that we're constantly monitoring and adjusting for, but this is a moment in time in terms of where we're at. So first slide is just a reminder of kind of how we are falling out in terms of student enrollment. Something that's interesting, we've talked a little bit about student enrollment decreasing over the last couple of years. I went back and looked at our August staffing reports, board reports, and from the fall of 2019 until the spring, projecting out for next fall, we've lost about 360 students. So it's significant when you think about that over time, and it, it wasn't all at once, so it sort of crept up on us, and it was during COVID years. So we're, we were sort of resetting, and, and our staffing didn't look as it did typically in a typical year during the COVID years. But when I went back and looked at the actual numbers, it, it kind of took me aback a bit, because it was more than I had actually thought. At any rate, we're starting to see the impact of that beyond just our homeroom into our non-homeroom or non-core classes. As a reminder, the, the board guidelines regarding class sizes are up there, it's also in the report. A higher end, this is kind of the upper end of those limits, of 24 students in classes in K through two, kindergarten through second grade, 27 students in third through fifth grade, and 29 students sixth through eighth grade. It's not our practice or goal to try and get to those limits, but it's, it's where we start really taking a closer look at student enrollment and sections that are needed. We started our registration this past January, January 23rd. Our families have done a great job of registering, I think the word's out, that they know this is a significant impact towards class size, so our advertisement has been helpful and our families have responded. And as Dr. Kremis Goli said, this fits into strategy in terms of our strategic plan goal five, looking at those non-homeroom or non-core classes. Terms of elementary planning, so this is pre-K through fourth grade, we continue to monitor the number of homerooms needed. It's interesting, again, if you think back to past enrollment reports, we often fluctuate between four and five sections at each grade level. Now we're, we're really fluctuating between three and four at most grade levels, and that is starting to creep up into fifth through eighth grade, having an impact at our bigger schools. So again, it's just, it's an interesting pattern if you step back and look over the course of several years. MTSS was a strategic plan element as well this year, and we started it in full force. As an offshoot of MTSS, we knew that there might be a request for additional supports to be able to enact the multi-tiered system of supports, both for students who might be struggling and needing some extra support, but also students who are excelling and needing more enrichment type of activities. Our elementary schools have had reading specialists for, for over a decade, probably two decades at this point, I might be dating myself, but it's an element that's already embedded into the fiber of our elementary schools. The request has been for math support teachers the last couple of years, and we really felt and saw that need this year with the rollout of MTSS. And so we have planned for math support teachers, at least one in each of our elementary schools. And I can say that we had a lot of internal interest, so our classroom teachers had first, first pick, if you will, or first, the ability to acknowledge that they wanted to do this work. And so they were interviewed, and they went through a pretty rigorous interview process with our building principals, and we selected internal candidates for those roles, and now we'll be filling the, the positions that they vacated for this coming school year. We look at grades five through eight, there's been a lot more discussion around the planning for three elements of the five through eight grade levels. So the last couple of years, we've had a double A, or some might call it an overflow team, when we had more students than we could handle with the three, five teacher teams at each grade level, we had a double A team, and sometimes that would be comprised- We had a double A team, and sometimes that would be comprised for seventh and eighth grade students. This current school year, it just impacted eighth grade, and so the two teachers teaching those classes, for the most part, were focused on the eighth grade level. We don't have a need for that this coming school year. And this is not uncommon. Some years, we needed, some years we don't, and we know this is the structure we employ. When we have, our student enrollment is more significant than the five teacher team structures that we have. So this is just more of an awareness. Next year, we do not need that double A team. An element that came as a result of that discussion is really looking at our math classes in seventh and eighth grade. So if you think about a five teacher team, there's about 120, 125 students on a five teacher team, and those, the reading teacher teaches 125 students, the science teacher teaches 125 students. The math teachers do not, because of the tiered structure of math. We have, in addition to team math, we have the ability to have accelerated math, and we have new tier math. And so the math teachers on team don't see those 125 students, they actually see far less. And so as we started to dig into these structures, we started to think about how might we structure the math classes differently. We're not recommending a change in the amount of math teachers. We're holding on to those resources, but looking at how we might better support the math needs of all of our students on those teams. So there might be an opportunity to have a math teacher teach an intervention class for students who are struggling, or maybe support the enrichment of students who are excelling. We've enlisted the support of our math department in grade seven and eight to help us to best use our FTE, the math support. It just may look and feel a little bit different than it has in the past, but the math supports are intended to be there to support all of the students. Non-homeroom classes, at the fifth through eighth grade level, focused on two areas, creative arts. When you have student enrollment going down, less students are attending the creative arts classes. The element that we didn't want to lose sight of is student preference in seventh and eighth grade, especially eighth grade. Students have the ability to sort of choose paths of interest. After we've exposed them to a variety of different arts classes, by eighth grade, they have the ability to say, this is what I'm really interested in, this is what I'd like to explore deeper. And so the staffing for creative arts really starts with that student preference piece. Not that all student preferences get honored as expected, but that's where we start our planning. And so we recognize in doing this that we actually are overstaffed in the creative arts area. And so there's an opportunity right now to lessen our FTE in creative arts, still with an eye towards maintaining student preference and having students have the opportunity to take classes that they're interested in. So there's, likely will be a decrease in that creative arts FTE. World languages as well, when you have less students taking the five languages that we offer, the class sizes are smaller. And so we have committed to continue to offer the five languages that we have, and we'll do so in the next year. But the class sizes might go up a little bit more, and then look, still within guidelines, still within guidelines. But because we have less students, we don't need as many sections of the classes that we had in the past. And so looking to utilize our world language teachers to support in other areas. Some have different endorsements and might be able to support EL, English Language Learners, or even, even Language Arts, quite honestly. So we're looking to utilize our staff the best way that we can to support the student needs without reducing any of our scheduling or curriculum opportunities. Student services. Student services is always staffed based on student need. That's how it plays out. Students who have special education service needs are provided for based on their minutes, their IEP team recommendations, and that is how we approach special education staffing. We did have a need to reduce one, one staff member in the Occupational Therapy Department this year, simply because we don't have the needs in terms of student IEP minutes or support needs at this point. So we did need to reduce by one. The focus for special education continues to be on mental health and behavioral needs. We saw this pre-pandemic, it is even more evident after the pandemic. And our staffing that we currently have, we believe will meet those needs, but we're not recommending any changes, like a decrease to that, because the needs are significant. That's kind of a brief overview of the report that will be shared out next Monday. Any questions?
Not really a question, but the 360 is surprising to see that number, which is about 10%, right? Over a few years. Do we have any idea if this is the trend in other feeder districts, or it's just we'll let, or, you know, anything else going on around us to help understand that?
I don't know, but I do know that it's in line with the enrollment reports that we see that were presented by Tony in the fall, that we were expecting a bit of a decline.
Do we know if Nutri-R is seeing a decline along those lines? I don't know.
I don't think that they are. They just received our last two really large WJHS classes, so I don't think that they're currently experiencing a decline in enrollment, but obviously, everything that we do then feeds their enrollment. But we can get some more information. I see Tony and wonder if you have some more information off the top of your head.
Not necessarily, just, actually, you pointed out the point I was going to make, which is we are the largest slice of Nutri-R, so Nutri-R's enrollment will mimic ours as time goes on. The November report is where the long-term enrollment projections was provided, so we have that report in board docs, which you can take a peek at. The trend is going to be our older grades going down, while our younger grades, we're projected to slightly tick up. We're still very level, if not trending a slightly bit down, and then in five years, going a little bit back up. Overall, we don't see large swings here. Over time, yes, we have trended downward, but in five years, we're expected to tick back up. So we're landlocked, so it's just a matter of birth rates and move-in, move-outs, and population aging. So there's answers to all of it, and usually, yes, it's bigger than just us, it's larger trends.
Right. No, it's surprising to see that. One other question. With accelerated math, is that typically, is it one teacher for seventh and eighth grade?
And I'll add, just kind of building off of Tony's comments, I think right now, first of all, we're really appreciative that the board has allowed us to maintain the FTE despite some adjusting enrollment. It really does give us the opportunity to think a little more creatively in light of some of the needs that are being identified through MTSS, and quite frankly, our mental health needs of our students as well. We've been able to really attend to some of those needs that are being identified, and think a little bit creatively about how we're using all of the resources that are available to us. And sometimes when enrollment adjusts a little bit, it gives us the chance to think that way. So thank you to the board for allowing us to maintain those teaching activities.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Mine is kind of follow-up to Ann. I don't remember, but I think demographic report talks about how many school-age kids there are in districts. I just don't remember if it's changed much.
From the November report?
You know, over the last few years, right? I always remember it being about 3,700 students, but my memory is notoriously bad. I'd be interested in, oh, sorry.
So there's two separate reports. If you look back to October, there's the Fall Enrollment, Fall Housing, we've called it, report, which just shows the last 10 years, or actually, one of the slides will show the last 20 years of enrollment numbers, more numbers than you probably care to look at. Our highest point was like 37-something, we're now down to about 3,350. You know, it's not, at least in the last 10 years. So it does fluctuate a little bit, and then that November report is the long-term enrollment projection, so you can look at that, which we get from Barriger. There was a CASADA one done by Nutri-R that was not that far off of the one that we received. So it's, no one has a crystal ball. I mean, they're all looking at the same data set. So, John, I'm not sure if you have a specific question, but yeah, we used to...
If I can help.
Sure.
Two things. One, in answer to Ann's question, that CASADA report that the township contributed to, the board has the ability to review that, so we'll make sure that that's in your hands again to answer your question, Ann. And the second is, Tony, can you remind us the definition of the Fall Housing Report, where those numbers come from and what that actually means?
Yeah, so every year, we report to the state just our enrollment numbers at the same timeframe. So October 1st of every fall, we report to ISBE what our numbers are, pretty much for every Democrat, every...
Enrollment group.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That you can think of, we pass that on, and that gets fed into like the Illinois School Report Card website and other places.
But to be clear, that's not based on the actual number of households, it's an enrollment number.
No, it's pure enrollment numbers, and we...
Sometimes it's a misnomer, and so I think that can be confusing. It sounds like we're like capturing who all lives here.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's really just the enrollment report on that specific date, for whatever reason, they call it Fall Housing Report, but it's actually an enrollment report.
Yeah, it's specific to District 39, and then comparable to other districts across the state. So yes, it's the kids that we serve. So whether that's in our physical buildings or the ones that attend an outplace school.
Yeah, so the question I had was, I think we can get to the number of just kids in districts, the ones who go here and the ones who don't. That was my understanding. No?
In order to get that information, we would have to know students who are homeschooled, we'd have to know students who are privately enrolled, and whether or not they live in our area versus another area.
Yeah.
There really isn't a publicly accessible way to get that information. We can estimate it based on the demographic analysis that some of the demographers do for us, but there's not actually a way of getting a head count, because if a student or their family choose to homeschool or choose to enroll elsewhere, that data isn't really available to us.
It's complicated. We do reside in an area where there is choice, so we have, there's even a school in town, or there's the parochial schools, so there's a couple of schools on the North Shore that people elect to send their kids to. So there are options here for parents. We happen to provide a very comparable, if not superior, education, so our kids tend to come to our schools. But we are in an area where there are other options. And Dr. Kremis Gole is right, there's no way to capture that number that we know that actually come from here. Many times, they're independent private schools and are not required to post in the way that we are required to.
I appreciate that. I was thinking that we could, because it would be an interesting day of work.
It would be interesting. That's where the demographers study of our area is really helpful, because if we could actually physically count all those children, it would give us a better sense when they're born, that they're rolling up. We don't actually have access to that. But we've had a longstanding relationship now with two different demographers, one even more probably closely aligned with us, and the other through the township, and so that's where we get those projections from. And they've been pretty steady, pretty on track with where our enrollment has been.
Yeah, usually, they're about 30 kids off every fall, so one way or the other, which, given the fact that we have around 3,356, I think, was this fall's number, like, that's, it's pretty good, fairly accurate. Thank you.
I really appreciate that we're looking at this so closely, and the analysis is really interesting. I had not thought about the math classes in that way, but it makes a lot of sense with kids coming out for accelerated and Nutri-R math. Do we have a sense of what those class sizes tend to be, or does it really vary? For the just typical grade level of math?
It does vary, but it can, it can range anywhere from 15 to, I would say, 22. Pity I might be off, but you might have a better sense.
No, that range is appropriate. It's about 15 to 23, depending on, because of the number of sections that our teachers teach and the number of students that we recruit that are involved in that.
So well, well below the 20, the upper limits of 29, and there's no interest on anyone's part to push it to that level.
Sure.
But to get them more of an average class size, that is our goal.
The junior high administration, the administrators are working with the teachers and talking about what those opportunities can be and how, you know, their expertise could be used throughout the day, but be mindful of how the class size, you know, could be comprised for each of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Schneiderfabebs. This would be the opportunity for the public to address the board, but it does not look like there's any public here, so we will move on to old business. Is there any old business? New business? We have an agenda item about board training and self-evaluation with an IASB representative.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight for the board, this is typically the time of year where we're scheduling that or thinking about scheduling that, and so if the board is interested in doing so, I can reach out to IASB and see what opportunities might exist, what dates exist. I know in the summer, it can be difficult, but before I started comparing dates and what options might exist, I wanted to hear from the board if that is something of interest for the group.
Board members, is there interest? Our two most veteran members are...
Happy to be there.
I hear you.
Thank you.
I hear that makes me happy.
For inviting us.
Do we have any goals that we would want to achieve, like the self-evaluation, or what are we thinking about?
Yeah, well, you know, first of all, we have a new board member, and so it's always good to realign the roles and responsibilities of the board, some of the goals of the board, and make sure that we have a clear vision of how we're interacting with each other. So we also, this board has taken a close look at their governance over the last several years and done some self-assessment and evaluation, so it might be interesting to, again, do that survey, you'll remember which one I'm talking about, self-evaluate, and then reflect on where are we at now compared to where we were last time we did this. So that tends to be what they want to come out and talk to us about. We could look at a date in the summer, we could look at an appointment kind of in conjunction with one of our board meetings if we wanted to, or we could reconsider this in the fall if that is the board's preference.
Is this consistent with what we did about two years ago?
Okay. There was a representative who came in, there was some chart board...
So it would be similar, the similar process.
It's a closed session, self-evaluation with a representative from the Illinois Association of School Boards.
It seemed like there was interest.
Yep.
My inclination would be, if they have dates, let's not wait to decide this until fall when dates might get snatched up. Maybe find out what their dates are, and then we can figure out what those, how those might align with our own personal schedules.
Okay. I can proceed in that way and not commit to anything until we have the chance to kind of review what options for the training there are, and also what dates might exist.
Okay.
Perfect.
Does that sound good?
Okay.
Any other new business? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session? Second? Anyone? Second?
I think we need to say why we're adjourning to executive session. Do you want me to seek the motion again? I can do that and elaborate. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific student matters in special education, negotiations, and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Tom, is he ready?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lisa Schneiderfabebs?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carried, we are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 9:31.